And it's not on the agenda, but let's do the Fledge of Allegiance ceremony. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Matta Clark.
David O'Callaghan.
Right now.
Councilperson Perry.
Present.
Councilperson Hilton.
Present.
Councilperson Dean McGee, who is unable to attend tonight. Vice President Katz.
Present.
President Coulter.
Present. Good evening.
Councilperson Coulter, is anyone able to make it? Councilperson Rick.
Present. Good evening.
All right. I think the mics are on. Welcome, everybody. We've got a workshop tonight, a little more low-key than normal. It is Monday, September 30th, and we are going to cover two things. One is an establishment of a Town Farm Renovation Committee. You may have heard me say playground and parks over and over again, but this has got a more formal name of a Town Farm Renovation Committee. And then we're going to slide into a workshop of a long-term financial plan. I don't think we'll go too long tonight. Probably out of here in an hour or so, maybe hour and a half, depending on how much you want to cover. So, this item came forward, I think it was just last week, we had a regular meeting, and since then, we've had a nice submission from our Recreation Committee. I've had the chance to be in touch with our Recreation Commission Chair as well as Justin. And I know, Justin, Nancy, you've been working on the playground, too. We have a proposal here to really formalize a Town Farm Renovation Committee. So I guess that might even be broader than the playground, that we're obviously looking to see reconstructed or replaced. It has been a Town Council priority, and I think from summing up the last meeting, everybody is on the same page, that there is a pretty good-looking grant opportunity for us that has a deadline of sometime in December. And all of us agree that we want to make sure we hit that bogey.
Yep.
I don't think I'm going to read all of this, but it would establish A through K, that sounds like about a 12 or 11-person committee, commission, I guess would be a subcommittee, you might say, to the Recreation Commission. And, Jo, are you want to liaise on to the Recreation Committee as well? So we have lots of opportunities to be in touch. So, Justin, did you want to add anything? I know you had a chance to talk to Chris as well. How are we looking here?
I'm good with it for the most part. The only concern I have is that it is, I mean, because it's styled as a Town Farm Renovation Committee, it is very open-ended. I mean, the committee will cease to exist upon completion of the project, which it does leave to the Town Council to decide when that is. But that's extremely open-ended. So, I mean, my understanding of the project is we're going to be looking at the playground, we've been looking at some other stuff. There's also potentially additional fields for soccer and then whole other areas. So it just seems like there ought to be something not quite that open-ended, or at least points of review. So I'm thinking of just, wondering if we should just add a number seven, and we would make what isn't currently number seven, number eight, and something to the effect of, I just drafted this on the spot, but "This resolution shall be subject to Town Council review at project milestones," or something, just so that as we get to milestones, if we want to change the nature of the mission, if we want to, just so that we're not looking at a committee that's never subject to reappointment or anything till the end of the project, which could be forever.
Okay. Yeah, sure. Come on in.
My name is Bob Sedoma. I'm a member of the Recreation Commission. However, tonight I am not speaking as a member of the Recreation Committee. I'm not representing them or anything else like that. I've been in touch with Stu and been working with Stu. The Playground Committee that's got together right now is targeting one large grant via the DAM to cover the cost of the playground on the north side of the town farm, where the main playground is now. They're also looking at to replace the equipment on the south side of the town farm, in front of the tennis courts, with a fit space, like a fitness space and stuff like that, that can be used for outdoor fitness. There are organizations that provide grants for this specified type of equipment, based on the audience that could utilize it. We also recognize that the equipment for children with disabilities is a necessity in this project and will certainly be included in the project. The committee that is being proposed includes individuals who represent the necessary experience and enterprise to complete this project. We'd like to ask the Town Council to provide their blessing so that we can move forward with the work, understanding that regular communications and progress reports to the council and the residents must occur. We'd also like to say it's important, really important to point out, that the people on this committee list are there because they add skills that are needed for this project. And it's not a political thing that we're looking for. What we're trying to get this done, the committee is trying to get this done, as in, Jason, I know that this is part of your, when you ran, this is part of your plea, not plea, but part of your, on your agenda, about the playground and stuff like that. That was one of your campaign promises. But, you know, we feel that the people that are there right now on this committee are really, they're people from all different walks, that have different skills, that can really work in bringing this project together. From writing the grants that are needed, to the type of equipment that everything is needed, it's all different people. So, like I say, again, I'm not speaking as a member of the Recreation Commission, I'm just speaking, and I speak on behalf of Stu, who right now is out of town. He'll be back at the end of the week. And I'd just like to hope that maybe you guys, people, can consider, before moving forward and changing or anything, consider whether you can speak to Stu and let him bring you up to date a lot better than what I can with this now. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. President, it's my understanding, from what Justin just said, that there are discreet people mentioned. And I think what, Justin, can you just sort of repeat your request? I think you wanted it to be that at some point, if...
Yeah, I just wanted to, all I wanted to do was add some kind of touch point, so that we're not, with this resolution, saying, this committee exists until Town Farm is completely renovated.
Okay.
Which could mean anything. It could, you know, we could put a skyscraper there and at the end of that project. Not that I'm intending that, people at home, that's...
Okay.
But, so what I was thinking, and I also would kind of like on number five, to add, excuse me, shall report at least monthly to the Town Council, just to encourage additional communication. But all I was suggesting, had nothing to do with the people on it or anything like that, but just as a number seven, "This resolution shall be subject to Town Council review at project milestones."
Okay.
Just so if we get to where we've done everything, and people start talking about a swimming pool, we can say, okay, we're going to review this and maybe not go to the swimming pool committee. That's my only purpose there. And I don't know if that's the best language. Project milestones is pretty vague, but it just gives us something. And always some future, that Town Council won't face accusations that they're interfering because they're reviewing it and the project not, quote, "complete."
But I guess my feeling is the project milestone includes, there are deadlines for grant applications and et cetera, et cetera, so...
Or the completion of a phase, or...
Right. Okay.
I mean, it's just, I mean, there's no intention to this, I was just trying to find something that we...
Right.
A milestone seems like a suitably vague, but specific term to...
Okay. Thank you.
That's a pretty nice report.
Just sort of an administrative thing. The Chair of the Recreation Commission is Chris Roemlein. I've tried two times now to get the spelling correct, and there are now two incorrect spellings in the materials.
I actually saw that.
So the correct spelling is R-O-E-M-L-E-I-N. Roemlein. I think it's pronounced here. Secondly, the list of names is different in the agenda compared to the list that's in the proposed draft resolution. And if I'm not mistaken, it's largely the same. One thing I wanted to just point out, that in the resolution, Town Administrator and DPW Director have been added as ex officio, which I personally think is a good idea, because in particular, the DPW Director needs to be part of this because of some facilities management responsibilities. But I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, I had discussed with Chris, adding certainly the DPW Director, mainly because I think we do want to emphasize with this that we're putting in place something more solidified to, you know, keep, maintain, and have a line of authority for that kind of thing. So I think it's good that the DPW Director would be on there.
Plus, we need the equipment.
And just so we're clear for the open meeting police out there, it's not the agenda that's, the agenda's just fine, it's the agenda request has a different slate of names than the...
Slightly, yeah.
Than the, and I'll read the names here as soon as we vote on it. Ms. South, you think that?
Yes. Hi. So after the last meeting we had, I spoke to a few people outside, and I had volunteered because, not to speak as a member of the school committee, but I'm on the Chair of the Health and Wellness. Every school committee has to have a health and wellness, it's a state law, and also the Tiverton prevention. Those are two huge factors if you're writing a grant, because the prevention, it's a protective factor. If you can keep kids safe and supervised anywhere, it's a protective factor, they call it that. So it carries a lot of weight when you write a grant. So I haven't heard from anyone, but I just want them to know if they need my help or the help of the Health and Wellness, and especially the prevention, because no one writes grants better than they do. Just let us know. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I've got every assurance from Chris that anybody here as well that wants to be involved or thinks they ought to be involved, the door's going to be wide open. So we'll put a little formality around this committee, but there's certainly no suggestion that it's limited to just that.
Thank you, Rob, because that's definitely the feeling I got from Chris, too, that he was really welcome to. Okay. Thank you.
The fun stuff, everybody should want to...
Right.
And I assume, it's great that we have an attorney on the team, but at some point we'll need a final sign-off on the solicitor as well, when we actually do the grant.
Yep.
Everybody's cool with that? All right. All right, so...
Can you clarify that? A sign-off from the solicitor?
Well, the grant itself, the application will be, come back to the council for approval, right?
Oh, yeah.
But I want to make sure this commission knows that the solicitor's there for their support as well.
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to approve as presented. Looks like you just got a couple little technical edits, obviously name corrections, and on item five, we would add words "at least," and we would add a new enumerated number eight.
Number seven, and read number seven.
Where are you looking for this item?
It's the proposed resolution itself. There's a second page.
In that hall of us have that.
Oh, here we are. Okay. I'm sorry. Okay.
All right, I'm sorry, Justin, what, can you give me the clarity one more time on number seven?
Well, it would be a new number seven that reads, "This resolution shall be subject to Town Council review at project milestones," and number seven will become number eight.
Okay. That's fine. And this would be a two, four, six, eight, 10, 11-member, why don't I just read off the names, so we have them in the minutes. We have three representatives from the Recreation Commission, Chris, the Chair, Roemlein, Dan Basolt, and Stu Gilfillan. Chris, of course, would chair it. We have, filling a slot for the Little League, Safety Officer, and HeartSafe Community Coordinator would be Dave Paul, Deborah Pallas from the School Committee, Jen Oser from a PTO, Ranger PTO, the president there, Adam Reposa, A.J.R. Carpentry, he's a carpenter, Josh Cora, a landscape architect, Catherine Hopkins, an attorney, Town Administrator, and DPW Staffing Ex officio. May I have a motion?
Just point of information. Chris may not be the chairman, because elections are next month, and someone else may run, you never know, so that may change.
Actually, the 19th is month.
Right. The 19th of October, they do have elections.
He's the current Chair.
So it may be a change of, possible.
Right. But he'd still be the Chair of this committee.
Okay.
As, yeah, I don't think, if they want to mix it up, does anybody care?
I don't know. I'm also not sure, are they, I was just assuming that they're authorized, the committee's authorized to elect its own leadership, right? I mean, Chris may be on it, it doesn't necessarily, I mean, or...
Actually, as I read the resolution, it, A, just reads that he happens to be the Chair, but I don't see any proposed...
Right. I mean, that's, I read it the same way, that we're creating this committee, and they can sort out amongst themselves who's... But they have sorted out at this point, correct?
I'm pretty sure Chris is going to Chair, but I guess you raise a good point. If he's, if he hits the beach somewhere, then just let them do their thing.
Chair.
I think the key thing that we all want to track is just not to hit that grant, not to miss the grant.
Right. I mean, I think all the names that you read off are going to be on there, I just don't know if that will be the way it'll end up as him the Chair. I don't know. But I just figured I'd make that point, no?
Yeah, good point. Okay. All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion then. I'll make a motion that the Town Council adopt the resolution establishing the Town Farm Renovation Committee.
Second.
All right. We have a live motion on the floor.
As amended.
As amended, with Justin's.
As amended.
All right. Floor's open. Any other questions or comments from the public?
I have some questions.
Yes, sir. Come on up, come on up. We're lonely up here.
Am I the only one here from the committee right now?
I guess so.
Is he on the committee? I haven't met any. I know Stu...
And just on that point, if I may, Adam, if I may, just, there was a whole flurry of emails late in the afternoon today of people who suddenly thought, you know, that they had to be here and realized they couldn't be here because of other commitments, so...
Well, you suggested that we be here, Jan. I believe that was your suggestion.
Well, I thought it would be a good idea, that it could be misinterpreted if you were, and so I'm very glad to see you.
All right. It's great to see you. How can we help? I got to ask you a question, I guess. So what is the, you said something about a chain of command. So what are we doing right, what are you putting together right now? Because I'm late to the party, I'm sorry. What is, you said, what is going to be the Town Council's involvement in this committee?
It's, just as it's been requested, they're looking, it's like monthly report, at least monthly reports.
Okay.
And that's about it. I think we all share the view that we don't want to miss the grant deadline.
Yeah. To be clear, in case you came in after, we did add one number to this, just to make the committee subject to Town Council review at project milestones, just because the way it is right now...
And who's going to agree to those milestones? Or is that something our committee's going to put together?
It's just open-ended. I mean, it's, if a phase is done, or, I mean, it's just because right now, literally, the project is undefined.
It is. It definitely is.
So you could say, you know, the Town Farm Renovation Project is the entire renovation of the south of Tiverton or something like that. So this just gives some flexibility for the council to say, okay, this phase is done, let's look at this and see how it...
Okay. So I mean, our first meeting with you guys is probably just going to be a broad overview of, you know, how we're going to approach, what grant surveys, things of that nature.
I think that's up to your team.
Okay.
Obviously, we're happy to meet.
But we definitely have a overview of grants.
Just for myself, I just don't want to miss the grant deadline.
Yeah, okay.
If it looks like it's Thanksgiving and there's no grant, I'll probably put it on the agenda.
But, Rob, we definitely have a overview of the grants, right?
Just trying to gather a little information for the people that aren't here.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
And I don't, you might have missed it, but we both had the chance to talk to Chris, too, so he's out of town. But I think we're all on the same page. So I just don't want to miss the grant deadline.
All right. I got to get home. My wife wants me home.
Okay. Thanks for coming. All right. Second call. Any other questions?
Yeah.
All right. Any objection to proceeding to the vote? If you all was in favor, that's unanimous. Thank you again for all that work and the work to come. Let's talk about long-term financial planning. This is a big topic. I've been kind of talking about it for a long time.
Grant something for basketball.
So, I don't think we need more than an hour here, and I know we're going to lose Tricia, so I want to make sure, if there's anything you want to add, don't hesitate to jump in. So what's, I have, I have the thinnest packet of the year, and I still can't seem to find it.
It's just this, right?
Okay. So you have a, you have a one-page piece of paper that has a list of about, oh, 20 potential very high-level action items. And then, all I've done is reprinted the slide deck from, that Justin gave a few months ago, just for some illustrative examples. And so we've talked about this a few times. We spent maybe half an hour on this at the last meeting. And what I thought we would do to just make incremental progress on this, is start to begin to suggest a very high-level outline. I've had a chance to run this by Justin, and I have not discussed with anybody else. And it's short enough here that I'll can read through it, and a lot of it is common sense. But ultimately, I'll say "we" unless Justin tells me he disagrees, but we think shooting for some kind of a February 1st, 2020 target date of a rough interim draft of a framework, okay, a framework and a plan. And I've been using the word "plan" for a while, but I really think it's actually maybe even just as important to think of it as a framework, because of course, a plan can change, there can be many, varied versions. We, of course, have a voice, but we don't actually set the finances for the entire town forever and ever. There's lots of stakeholders, and ultimately, the voters decide. So I think it's important where, to think about this as well as a framework for discussion, and not just a plan. And that's one thing. And ultimately, if it's possible to have something that's close to a working final document in about a year, say, October or so, 2020, and then perhaps in February, if we have an interim draft, maybe we can kick the tires on it through the budget cycle, maybe it's helpful to do that. And again, all of this is open to discussion, but I wanted to throw something out there on the table to at least kick the ball around a little bit. So, I don't think that in the perhaps hour we might spend on this tonight, that we need to actually answer all these questions. What I would respectfully suggest is that we look at this high-level outline, and then take some time to think about what types of detail that you might add to this. So for example, what I call item one, or reference number one, is to identify stakeholders for input. We talked a little bit about this last time, we talked about, of course, having the Budget Committee involved. A lot of the obvious, the department heads, the Town Administrator, the School Committee. With the Recreation Commission, of course, would be a perfect group as well. So that would be what number one is, is really start to think about who should be, who do we need to make sure that we check in with, the actuary, things along those lines.
Treasure.
The treasure, exactly. So what I might suggest is, as you think of these things, or as those of you in the public think of these things, jot them down, shoot an email, keep them in your notebook, whatever works for you, and we'll eventually compile this. And then think about how to reach out to these stakeholders. Second would be, we're already doing some of this, but obviously, public hearings and workshops, we want to take as much feedback as we possibly can and leverage as much talent input as we can. A tentative schedule, I'd give you two potential milestones, if you will, perhaps an interim document by February 1st, which is, I don't know, about six months out, maybe a little less. And about a year to have something that looks like a final version. Vendor consultant support, this was a suggestion at the last, we've talked about actuary. We also, I think, Councilperson Hilton suggested that, of course, there are folks out there that may have done some of this. I think, Nancy, you found an example from a Massachusetts town of a framework. So I think that's something, I think that's a great idea, and we should be looking into that with a little more detail, at least figure out what the cost might be. Then, so five and six, what I've listed out here is guiding concepts. So by analytical, what I'm thinking of are things like, how long should the framework go? Should it be 10 years, 20 years, five years? Another approach on this that I might suggest is thinking of scenario analyses. I think you've probably seen these in other places. I like to think of it as something like an A scenario, a B scenario, and a C scenario. Maybe A is the absolute everything we want, wish list as fast as possible, and C is something like the absolute minimum to, you know, keep the lights on and comply with the law, and B is something in the middle. Because it's very hard to make these decisions in just one static choice. You really have to think in terms of range, of ranges. So these are the types of things that I would call analytical guiding concepts. It sounds a little wordy, but we are inevitably going to have to grapple with estimates, and there's no way to know things. So what we might have to reach consensus on is what type of confidence factor would we want to have. So if we say, try to estimate, how much money would we need to repave all the streets in Tiverton to get to a, say, level B quality standard? Well, we don't really know. We have to make estimates. And so I think we should ask ourselves, well, what will our confidence factor be? Is it a 90% confidence factor? Is it one standard deviation? These are the types of things that I'm suggesting you think of as analytical concepts, you know? How do we even begin to wrestle with a very complex issue? Substantive guiding concepts, I think, are really more into the policy and the meat of it. And one of the things that, why I went ahead and pulled out this very colorful slide presentation from Justin, is if you look at page two, for example, in orange, it has a goal, this is a goal that I share substantively, which is to achieve a tax rate that is the average among neighboring communities. That's not an analytical choice, that's a substantive policy choice. And there may be other, I'm sure there are many other things like that. Now, we can have a debate and a discussion, and we should have one. Well, what is a neighboring community? Is it, does it include, I think Justin always puts Swansea on his list, and I'm trying to figure out if that's on the same latitude or not, I'm not quite sure. So substantive guiding principles, you know, maybe an example is, we are comfortable with unfunded liabilities at a rate of 90%. That's a policy decision, or maybe it's 110%. We want the unrestricted reserve, I think the charter requires 3%. We may want 5%. Those are substantive guiding principles. By the way, these will all eventually come into tension with each other, which is normal. And the idea here is to construct a framework that we can help to make these trade-offs. So that's what I'm trying to get at with substantive guiding concepts. So that number six is actually, I would think, one of the biggest and toughest choices, I wouldn't say choices yet, but one of the most important of these, of everything in this list to think about. Okay. So moving right along. So seven is identifying all liabilities. And again, I'm pointing to some of the good work that Justin has done here. He's, you know, again, since you've seen this slide, and since I didn't create my, you know, our own slides, I thought this would be helpful. Slide two talks about accounting for all liabilities with stability. And if you go to, say, they're not numbered, but the, maybe the second or the third one from the back, it lists things on here, such as paving and drainage and Bay Street, and brought us up a landfill on here somewhere. We have to, oh, in the very back is landfill. A lot of these, we actually have a little bit of a starting point here, because we really need to identify every single liability in the town. And I know that's going to be big and scary, and it's going to be hard to estimate it. What type of confidence factor and range that we would land on as an analytical, you know, guiding concept that we would work towards. But, and I do think, as Jan knows, I think he's done a commendable job on the capital, and I'm sure he's had help from Reconnaissance and the team, on the capital needs, right? And I know that Justin's been working with the actuary, and there were some of our labor contracts, really trying to get a handle on the OPEB and the labor liabilities. And so if you support this framework, I think the ask would be to, for Jan and his team and everybody else, every single board and commission of the town to actually brainstorm, what are all of our liabilities? And get them on a list. And I'm obviously not suggesting we're going to handle all of them in one year, maybe even five years. But if it's not on a list, like Bay Street, it will never get fixed. We have to make incremental progress. So some of these are broken down, you know, debt speaks for itself, labor is a pretty knowable thing, other than some actuarial work, 7C for other current liabilities, a little bit of a catch-all there. And then litigation, we talked about this a little bit, and I'm sorry, I'm probably halfway through my monologue, for those that are, that are killing with boredom. Note the distinction in category seven between current and potential, right? So current are the things that have, you know, and we can do accounting speak, but it is what it says, which is that there basically are liabilities that are existing and knowable. that are, that are existing and knowable now, at least qualitatively. Potential, so litigation potential is a really good example of this. We have a, we have an array of cases against us. And, you know, we really don't know for sure how they're, how they're going to turn out. You know, it could be a personal injury case, and it could be anything from zero to, you know, a seven-figure number. We don't know. And one of the things that we've talked about in the past, and I know I've talked to this listener about as well, is really handling our litigation portfolio, much like a company would, and, and trying to put a value on it. Again, we need an analytical guiding concept to try to get a confidence factor on that. But you could imagine him saying, if we lost every single case that we have against us, and if we had new litigation coming in at the, at the historical rate, the town's liability might be X. We have to think about whether we need reserves for that type of thing, or make sure we have insurance coverage, that type of thing. Needs, which is number eight, it sounds a little bit similar to liabilities, but what I, what we're trying to get at here in, is not something that we, we owe potentially money to somebody else, or there's a debt to be paid. A need is, is a need. Something like, have, I don't know if we ever got our, our records in the basement of this town hall. I know, I feel like for years, we're always talking about, we really need a proper archive system in case, you know, you know, hurricane, you know, Bob 2 comes through. That, that's a need. It's, and not so much a liability, at least not yet. So, so we have to think about that, too. And if you subscribe to this A, B, C framework, you can, I, I would think for an A scenario, you put every single need that you can ever possibly think of on the table. And then we start with every single need that we think is, you know, minimally responsibly required, or certainly required by law. That's what we're trying to get through by needs. Under that category of needs are this idea of, first of all, operational versus capital. So capital needs, as you know, we've, we've started that work, I think, quite a bit. Operational, I'm thinking more along the lines of, they're not capital, but they are baseline-type things that, that need to be done. So maybe the records isn't actually an example of that. So it's maybe one bolus of spending, and then we're caught up, it's not something capital, but it's just something we need to do. Maybe there's a, a department position that is unfilled, needs to be filled. It's not a liability, it's a need, and it's not capital. That's baseline, that's operational baseline. And again, we can change any of these. I'm just trying to get something on the, on the paper. Nine is revenue sources. I think that's pretty obvious, although, again, for our revenue sources, we should also apply some analytical guiding concepts, such as our confidence factors. We've talked about, let's take a look at the sports betting lawsuit, right? Now, that is $100,000 of exposure. Not the biggest amount of money on our, you know, $50 million or so combined budget, but still, you could say, we have $100,000 revenue stream, and it's in litigation, and, you know, so maybe there's a 50% chance that that will go away. That's the type of things. We want to think about the revenue streams just the same as we would with our, with our liabilities and needs. Ten is, is a miscellaneous catchall. That means what it says. Anything else that we didn't think of. And 11 and 12 and 13, I've sort of gotten to, which is, you know, trying to do an interim product, kick the tires on it, and then think about how often, if this was a final product, too, you can, I think of this as somewhat akin perhaps to the comprehensive plan that we do for the town and land use. Can somebody remind me, is it every five years that we are required to update that? Is it, is it five? So, you know, maybe this is a, maybe this is, maybe that's the right timeframe. In fact, maybe you could imagine the comp plan is done, and then two years later, a year later, you, you do something like this. That's what number 12 is, is at. And that's it. So, Justin, did you want to, actually, Nancy might have a question, and I'll let you fill in any gaps.
I just have a, a basic question. I think it's great. I think it's a wonderful, an essential exercise to go through. I guess my practical question is, given the budget committee, like, how, the budget committee does the budget every year, if the town council comes up with this long-range financial plan, and specific steps and guidelines, et cetera, et cetera, how, how does it work with the budget committee doing the budget? That's my question.
It's a great question. First of all, when I was on the budget committee, I was trying to do this there as well.
I know.
And when I was on the town council before. Haven't given up yet. I, I think it is a, is a tool, but it does not change any of the mechanisms and processes and approvals. It is a tool and nothing but that. So we have, it's not me, this is a little bit of a detour, but with some of the, the labor contracts that we've done, I think it's fair to say that we've improved our modeling of that.
Yep, absolutely.
The spreadsheet work.
Absolutely.
And I think, you know, a lot of people have helped with that. I know Justin's done a lot of work on that, too, as is the administrator. So, you know, that's a tool. And that tool, I think, was helpful for us to be comfortable with, you know, what went up and what went down. And I'm particularly interested in that tool. I think really tried to address how the OPEB liabilities were going down. So, so I see this as a tool. In a perfect world, the budget committee would, would subscribe to it, help us build it, help us develop it, as would others. If they don't or choose not to, then it still, I think, has value because it would inform our transmission of a budget request.
Right, definitely would affect that. And so, yeah.
And all of our other decisions as well. So when we, you know, if we have unexpected revenue, or if we transfer funds, or if we ratify a union, a labor contract, I would hope that we would take a document like this, sort of hold it up, and say, you know, how does this look? Yes?
I just have a follow-up question on that, because I, I think it's an incredibly important question. What exactly is the role and function of the town council compared to that of the budget committee in the financial planning and budgeting process? And I think there is mass confusion about it. And there were some interesting detours, at least I call them detours, that the budget committee made into policy decisions on all kinds of issues. And regardless of, you know, whether you agree with that or not, I think it's confusing, to say the least. And I personally believe that the council sets policy, including fiscal policy, and the budget committee has the enviable task of implementing that policy. That's the way I see it. But I don't think that is clearly understood or necessarily agreed with. And I think that will trip this initiative up big time. Unless we do something about it.
It's a good question. And having been on both the council and the budget committee, I recognize that tension. I know others here have as well. And remember, too, the budget committee, there's also the voters, most importantly, that they can be not interested at all at anything about what the council or the budget committee think. But, you know, it, I, I don't know, maybe Justin has a thought. He's, he was on the budget committee as well, and Nancy, I, there's no doubt about it, the town council sets policy. And there's also no doubt about it, that the council can, and the school committee can bind the town into ways that really compel budget committee to make recommendations. And there is a fair debate on what is, what is left on the table for them. But I guess my, the aspirational goal would be that we wouldn't have to agree on the decisions or on the, on a, on a plan. But I, I would hope, and I think there could be value in at least agreeing on the framework or the language. So the budget committee, you know, and I forgot to mention, too, that all of these, we might want a rank order, much like we've talked about with capital plans. So if we identify, say, $30 million of needs, I think that needs some kind of a, of a recommend. We do all this work, by the way, right now, in our heads or ad hoc. So nothing really changes. We make policy recommendations, and we, as we've done with the last budget, we might say, we really want to do this, and this has to wait. They can have other priorities, and so can the voters, and they should. But I'd hope that at least there could be a framework that could be held up, too. I don't know. Justin, did you want to take us to have that question? Because it is a classic question.
No, I think, well, I think the, it's a distinction of the types of plans. I mean, when we think of the comprehensive community plan, that's a document where if you do something that goes against it, you're not allowed to do that. There are state laws, et cetera, et cetera. Or, to some extent. Whereas this is, you know, this isn't, the budget committee could vary from the plan. But having it as a tool and a, to, to be able to give them some context, I think is, is a good kind of control on that, because it, it, I mean, those are ultimately political decisions. And so if you can, if we have a plan that sort of sets the policy of the town, and they're varying, maybe there's a good reason to do that, but you can point it out. I think probably the, the classic example is the payment into the police pension fund. I mean, it's just, in, in almost every way, it's an arbitrary number, because it's based on estimates of, of long-term financial behavior of the, the investment fund. And the $700,000 is, is not a match to our annual recommended contribution. It's kind of a number that was picked up. And sometimes people, you want to reduce it or increase it. But having the long-term plan says, well, this is our liability, and that's some way we can calculate, though this is what will happen to our liability. Maybe it's worth it to do that right now, or maybe it's not. So I'm not sure that, I don't know that the budget committee can necessarily chip up the plan. They, they might make it more difficult to, to achieve it. But in doing that, I think it's an excellent exercise, because we'll have all these moving parts on some kind of spreadsheet that we could then say, all right, I changed that number as you've told us we have to do, and this is what's going to happen across the board. Let's not do that again. You know, so I think it's, it's, to me, I see it almost as a way to, to help people who aren't necessarily financial professionals. It's an elected office here, here in the budget committee, understand the implications of their decisions. So I'm, I'm not too concerned. I think a lot of that will be, be healthy. And in any event, as Rob indicated, these are things we do, we just don't necessarily know what we're doing when we do them. We just say, okay, well, right now, I think, here's a number. Let's do that with the pension fund or, or whatever. And it has consequences, we just don't trace them.
Justin, remind me, I don't have the charter in front of me, but could the town council be a petitioner? Elector petitioner?
Well, the, the way the, the way that's all structured is the council could put its own, puts its own budget on the agenda, or members of the council could be petitioners, but not as, as has happened, but not necessarily, you know, it's not a council petition. So...
Okay. Oh, I got you. Yeah, all right. But we could put forward a, a budget that matches our...
Well, presumably, the, the adminis, if we had a plan that everybody agreed to, that was the, the financial plan, the administrator's budget would come to us reasonably close to that. We wouldn't adjust it too much.
Right.
And that would be the plan that followed, the, the budget that follows the plan. So if the budget committee were to veer from that.
Right.
Presumably, we would say, no, let's put ours back on there.
Right, that's what I wanted to get at.
I think that's, that's an interesting way this, I hadn't thought of before, that's, this interacts with our budget process. Because up till now, the school committee and the council have kind of said, well, what's the, how does that work if we're putting our own budget on it? What's the point of that? It's not really clear what, what it's really for. But if, if there is a plan that we're following, that's a good way to, to assert, no, we mean it. And also, we'd have the plan to be able to say, and this is why, because you changed this. And then, you know, next thing you know, we've got a 20...
That's what I was getting at. That's what I was getting at. Okay.
In 10 years, we've got a 20% tax increase because the flow of money happened that way.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Do you have another question?
Well, I, if I may, just commenting, you, I think, used a very important example, which is unfunded liability. And I may slightly differ in my opinion about whether that's an arbitrary number or not. But it's a very good example of, we either take it seriously or not. And some people think, well, you know, that's a number, we, we can deviate from that without further discussion necessarily, or explanation of why it's now all of a sudden not imprudent to deviate too much from the policy. Which, to me, is incredibly important because I think the history has been that for, you know, many, many years, decisions were made that have resulted in unfunded liability. And it, it takes a culture change and an attitude change to change that, and then to keep changing it instead of sliding back to it. So that's what I'm concerned about. At the same time, when I say that, it sort of reinforces my impression that what we're talking about is a policy document rather than a plan. And there are different policies in there. Some is truly fiscal policy, some is, I think, more a political policy in terms of where you want to end up with, you know, tax rate and everything like that. And I'm not sure how we get from one to the other, but I'll be interested, too.
I might just briefly say, as, I think, you can almost think of it as a framework. And then, any of us and anybody can apply their own version of the plan to the framework. But if we at least have, so for your example, the unfunded liability, we may come to a consensus that says, as in analytical guiding concept, we want to measure our unfunded liability with 67% confidence or something, whatever that is, two standard deviations. And then substantively, we might say, we want to have the liability down to that, paid off in, say, 30 years, which would be a substantive concept. Now, the budget committee might say, well, we want to do less. And then hopefully, the conversation means, well, is it that you disagree with the estimate, or that you want, you want a higher confidence factor, or you just want more time to pay it off, or you just don't care? That type of, so they can reach a different conclusion. But hopefully, it's, you know, it's, it's sort of like, I don't know if this is a good analogy, but sort of like playing a sport. Everybody plays it differently and, you know, but the rules of the game, the lines on the field are hopefully more or less agreed to. So, and I, I want to make sure that Tricia gets in, because I know we're going to lose her in a few minutes, so.
Well, I, I think to Jan's point about the budget committee is that, just like the council, you know, that there's, in part, a new budget committee, if not all new members, every two years. There's a new council every two years. And the budget committee has certain powers under the char, charter that are theirs alone. So I, I do think that it is, I, I do think that it is a little difficult with the situ, you know, the, the government that we have, which is what we've adopted in the charter, that, you know, that you have this sometimes disconnect between the council and the budget committee, and/or the school committee and the budget committee. And ultimately, we've empowered the, the budget committee to, to be able to be the final decision maker on, on the, the official budget that's put forward by the town. Separately, there are petitioner budgets allowed, but, you know, that's really, it's really up to them. And creating a document like this that goes too far out when you have such dramatic changes in the personnel and the makeup of both the council, the school committee, and the budget committee, makes it really difficult because you may have a budget committee one year that espouses the, the same concepts and says, yes, we're on board with this. And two years later, you may have a totally different budget committee that says, mm-mm, no way, you know, that this is, that this, this is not what we want. So it's a little difficult.
The one thing, Patricia, I think, that one distinction I would reemphasize, that Justin reminded me, and now I'm thinking of the wording. The, there is the, the petitioner budget, but before you get to that stage, either the town council or the school committee has the right to put an alternative budget in. It doesn't, it doesn't rise to the level of an elector petition. But, so there is that stopgap where the, where the town, if, if they really veer from a policy we come up with, there is an option for us to stick to our policy and put a budget in.
There is. But if one or the other wants to do that, you have to have buy-in from the other, the other body, meaning the council or the school committee.
Yes or no? I mean, the school committee could just stick with what their original one was, and the town council could change it. The town council could change theirs, not the school committees.
Yes. That, that's correct. But in terms of, and if you actually read the language to this, because this came up a couple of years ago, whether or not...
I think I wrote it.
Whether, either both parties have to agree to an alternative budget. Hang on, let me finish. Or then you can only take the other body's original request.
Correct, correct.
And one of the difficulties with that is that the original request that may or may get sent to the budget committee may or may not be somebody's bottom line. In other words, both the council and the budget committee, or in the school committee, may send a request to the budget committee, hoping that they're going to get what they ask for, but, you know, knowing that there's a possibility that they might not. It, it just makes it, it makes it more difficult to put together a, a budget from the council, school committee, unless both parties agree... unless both parties agree that they want to work together on their own, on their own alternative budget. I just...
I guess I sort of look at it ultimately as the ultimate transparency. I mean, if the school committee wants to stick with their hopeful budget, and the Budget Committee hasn't recognized it, but they want to stick with that, but the Town Council wants to stick with their proposal. I mean, I think the voters get to see everything, and they can make up their mind.
I don't think, can I just answer that? I don't think that any of it is not transparent. I'm just saying that, and honestly, I wouldn't necessarily presume that it's the school committee that has a hopeful budget necessarily, any more than the council could have a hopeful budget. I mean, I don't, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to judge anybody's...
I'm not, I am not judging. I was just using your example, so.
The larger point that I think you raised, which is a good point, I would say, is to be mindful that the personnel changes are, you know, and again, I think that's a challenge, but also an opportunity. Because if there is a framework that has some institutional buy-in, you know, that the treasurer would be obviously involved, the actuarial team, you know, there's a lot more players to this than just the Budget Committee, or just the school committee and the Town Council, that at least the framework would help provide some of that momentum, so people don't sort of forget, oh, here's the list of all needs, you know, that we, that we brainstormed and we've updated every few years.
If I could just follow on that. I think in that environment where the personnel and the elected officials are constantly changing, it makes something like this more important to have, not less.
Yeah.
Because it makes everything conscious. So if a new Budget Committee or new Town Council comes in and says, no, we're throwing that out, we have different priorities, that's fine. They might be the right priorities, maybe they ran on those priorities and were elected on that behalf. But at least it's a conscious, we're changing these priorities. And I think that's an important exercise.
Yep.
From the schools.
No, not representing the school committee, no. But I sat with you, Nancy, those freezing nights on Judson Street with the wind coming through the walls, when you were writing the Charter, the new FT, where, so what I think is so important is they tried to stick with fidelity to the financial town meeting when they changed it, because they knew a lot of people had, you know. So what, if you remember, the Budget Committee used to put on a budget, and then the school committee put on a budget, the Town Council, and then you had three people from the floor. So they discussed it back and forth, and they said, let's try to duplicate that. So it was the Budget Committee would put on their budget, and then the school committee would have an optional budget, and the Town Council would have an optional budget. And then a petitioner could come with, any amount of petitions could come. So they were discussing the number, and they said, maybe 50 signatures back and forth, and 300, and they just couldn't decide what. Anyway, they came as we noted, 50. But my point is that we have to really make sure we understand this process. It's our form of government. And you all were there, you all know what happened when the school committee tried to put on their optional budget that year. And we're not going to go into the details because we're still pending in court, and I'll probably be in trouble. But my point is, in the discussion of all this, and all these plans are great, and five-year plans, and we have our plans, but the actual process that we go through, there has to be clarity. We went through the whole thing you went through with the new Charter thing. We tried to clear up some of the language. But that can't happen again. If the Budget Committee comes up with a number, and then either the school committee or the Town Council feels that they need to put a number on, to make their budget work for the people in the town, we have to be able to do that. Okay, thank you very much.
Now, that, I think we'd agree that the Charter, if it's not ambiguous, it certainly could be worded better. So I know on the Charter Re-Commission, we tried to get a little clarity on there. And the trade-off, right, is if you can make changes to the very last minute, like you saw at the financial town meeting, you have the most, the freshest data, but the least amount of notice to the people. And so the, so that's the balance, you know, the Budget Committee would do all this work, and then all of a sudden, 10 seconds before the meeting, you can change it. So it is, it is a tension there. Did I miss anything on the, on the list? Anything, or anything you want to speak to on the slides?
I don't think so. I was just wondering, given the time that Tricia's going to have to leave soon, if, I noticed we have a lot of department heads here. I don't know if they've been asked to prepare anything. If not, that's fine. I'm just, I don't want to have...
I did suggest that this might be an important meeting to attend. That doesn't mean everybody actually can. I'd hope to see a few more. On the other hand, this is still somewhat difficult to get our heads around, for some of us, I believe. I do think it might be helpful to try and get a better idea of what the rest of the process looks like. And one question I have, this is going to overlap with the budget process, which tends to be, at least it was last year in my case, a very time-consuming process. How do you see this happen? How often will there be meetings, you think? Who should be participating in these meetings? Just so we can get a little more...
For this to happen?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll take a shot at that. And of course, I don't have any pride on this. My guess is that this type of work is already happening in most, if not all, the departments. I know, I'm sure the school committee has some kind of plans like this. I think the, I, you know, I'm sure the police chief has these types of things at a department-by-department level. So the first step you might do with the team is just sort of gather what knowledge we have, and try to pull out what has worked, what hasn't worked, or what some of the modeling has been. But if I were, again, I'm just throwing this out here, I'll take all the criticism, but, you know, I would think it's, what is it, October now? So, almost October? October's tomorrow. Okay. November, December, January, if we're talking about four months, that's it? Am I missing? No, it's just four months, February 1st, right? And that's what I mean by sort of an interim. So I would think...
Three months, if it's December 1st, January, February 1st.
One of the things that we might consider to be more respectful of your time, more efficient, is to not ask your team to present to the Town Council and the Budget Committee twice. I'm just wondering if that might be one thing that we could do, and actually repurpose some of that time into developing this. I think we've had times, department heads come here, and then I go to the Budget Committee, it's the same presentation. We could do those together, or we could just rely on you at that phase. For this specifically, maybe what we could ask ourselves is to go through, you know, identifying stakeholders for input, that's number one. Consider vendor consultant support. I think we could assign that to somebody here. The guiding concepts, analytical ones for sure, and beginning to create a brainstorm lists of liabilities, needs, revenues, and have a, like a big brainstorm list of all of those items in a month. Remember, we don't need to make the perfect the enemy the good, right? So something that begins to put it all on the table.
Who does the work? Brainstorming is one thing, but gathering information and, you know, compiling it in a...
I think, I think the work usually falls to the person that's proposed it, so I wouldn't say it's, it doesn't have to be you, and I'm mindful of your time. The key thing that I say that administrators desperately needs to do is to capture the knowledge that we have through our department. That's the most important thing. If it comes down to something like, who's going to reach out and find if there's any vendors or consultants, then, you know, I think it would be one of us. And if, much like we just did with the playground, Town Farm, if we want to formalize it with a subcommittee, we certainly can. I think it depends too on how much collateral support and buy-in we have from, say, others. I mean, if the Budget Committee were to support this, they have 11 on the Budget Committee? I should remember this, right? That's a lot of bodies. They may be interested in taking on some of these. Back in the day when I was on the Budget Committee, sometimes you'd have different functional stuff, you know, a bunch of civil engineers. I loved by two minutes concrete, things like that. So I'd take that kind of stuff on. Justin is doing a lot of actuarial work. So I, I think it's probably too soon to sort of like really assign a lot of work. If there's consensus, I would probably think the highest value thing you could do between now and a month from now would be to capture what you may have already with your staff. Because I'm guessing that there's some of this work that's done, and I've seen you do it with capital plans. So I think it's...
Well, it was done last year. We did some of that. And I won't comment on what happened with all of it. But I foresee some difficulty doing this at the same time. I think the time demands that may, and it may even be confusion. But it's worth trying. The one thing that I heard you say that I definitely sort of want to endorse right off the bat, to the extent it's possible to have consolidated presentations by department heads to the Budget Committee and the council, I think that would be very, very worthwhile.
I agree, for both sides.
But I think that should be truly a workshop, you know, where you just say, okay, we're going to be here for X number of hours, all of us, and we go through the different parts of the...
Because everybody has to ask questions.
Yeah. Because otherwise, there sometimes was a huge disconnect between, you know, one and the other.
Yeah. One of the things I've learned too late is, I always create these frameworks of things I'm going to do, like if I want to get to know people better, and keep in my mind what I did during the day. And then I create so much information, and it's better just to note what you can. And so I'm aware of the challenge of some of this. The way I see it, and Rob, you might disagree or agree, but there are really kind of two angles to, as far as who does the work. I think a lot of this was of our interest, and if other people are interested in helping, then they can come forward. But it would be, first thing in my view, is get everything on the table so we know what the big pile looks like. And that would, a lot of that would just come to us, you know, and we'd be saying, okay, well, we know there's, we have to fix roads, so what do we have for a list of how long we have till we have to fix roads? And then we could ask you. And if there isn't a list, there isn't one. But, you know, just build it up. And we would be the ones providing the impetus, what exists already. The other part of it, though, I think dovetails very well with the budget process, particularly with the budget books that I know the Budget Committee gets. There's a lot of detail in there of road paving schedules, that kind of thing. So this might just add another, not even more work, but just another way of looking at that package and saying, here are, with a little bit more of an emphasis on liabilities, maybe. But again, not, the idea here isn't to create a whole nother level of work for everybody to do, but see how we can, whatever work we're doing already, we can just capture, and whatever work might be done a little bit differently, just to change the way that the document's presented, that makes it fit a little bit better into this framework, we could do as well. So I, I don't anticipate us giving a command of, okay, you know, everybody, I want, ravage your, ravage your filing cabinets now, some of which still aren't digitized, and, you know, give us all the information on every liability. But as we can gather it, I think that's what we want to do. And if, if we come to the budget process, and it's incomplete, you know, it's incomplete, but we're making progress.
And to maybe put a finer point on how I could see this actually happening, is let's say that in a month, we had another workshop, and we at least had a list going of these key categories, you know, liabilities, needs, revenue, right? So if we're thinking about the confidence factor, right, if we have, we have to think in ranges. So the range, a range between zero and infinity, we have 100% confidence in that range, right? So if I went to the taxes, or tax, if I say we had a, we got $1,000 a year on dog licenses, I don't know what the range is. We're not going to spend too much time doing a historical analysis of that. But we might say, we think, I'm going to guess with two-thirds confidence, 67% confidence, that the range is between $500 and $2,000 a year. So the ranges get bigger. Over time, as this thing, as people invest more time, the ranges get tighter, or the confidence factor gets up. So I don't think it's feasible to have 95% confidence on a range that's, you know, plus or minus $100. I think it's about qualitatively getting these things on the table. And then you go from there, and probably near the top of the list is going to be something like major capital, or the O-PET, which we've, we've worked, and we've, you know, struggled a bit, and we've sort of reached these conclusions, like we might need actuarial support. I mean, that's the type of thing that you would do. So I have a fair amount of confidence that, that even by February 1st, we can have a list of all liabilities, all needs, and all revenues, a whole long list of them. And maybe they have low confidence factors, but at least it's something to begin with. And then we can take it from there. I mean, we can't ask the solicitor, hey, you've got three months, I want a, I want a A, B, and C scenario of what is our potential exposure of current liabilities of litigation, and historical litigation trends at a two-thirds confidence factor. Can you do that in the next three months? I think he would say yes. You know, and, you know, I know that Chris isn't here, but I'm pretty sure the Recreation Commission, their interest areas, would be able to do that within their scope. And if people don't bring in that level of detail, then it stays at a very, you know, low confidence range. But you'll have a document that has everything on there, and then the public can say, hey, you know what, you forgot about, you know, Foggland Beach because the water level might be rising. Did you think of that one? Nope, we didn't. We're going to add that on there. What does that going to cost that guy? So I would assure you that this would not swamp your, your work effort.
I'm actually not asking it because I'm worried about...
Yeah, yeah, no, I just...
It's sort of a given. But it's really, I think all of us, we've been through periods here where we had X number of meetings a week.
Yes.
You can only do that so long. And then you're dead.
I agree.
And I don't think that's a smart way to do this kind of planning.
We could have a need of putting like a nap room somewhere.
It could be one of your guiding concepts, to not have more than X number of meetings.
I mean, I, I don't know. I could see, you know, one a month, and maybe, maybe a little, maybe an extra meeting coincident with the budget process for February 1st. And then you have it, you know, I think a lot of it really depends to see what the Budget Committee does. I obviously love to see if the school, and the schools have like a, you know, they have financial professionals over there. Are there any department heads that want to? I mean, a library, I'm sure is doing all this stuff. I mean, is anything you hear and that sounds just nuts? Any best practices you'd like to share?
We're going to have a follow-up discussion at the next department heads meeting.
It's a long-term plan, so it can take a long time to get there. The key is to start. It's like all these liabilities, they'll never get, they'll never go away if you don't start sometime.
Well, I think, and I hope the department heads that are here, you know, agree that this makes you think about, you know, the additional thought that needs to go into preparing not just for the next budget, but sort of longer term, how that budget is going to fit into the long-term needs. And that's, that's the discussion we're going to have. And we have started that to some extent, in part by, you know, emphasizing that, okay, we had a budget for this year, how is it working? Instead of just, let's, let's do it again next year, just the same way. And it's somewhat similar. It's a different way of looking at how you develop a budget request. This should be now in the context of ultimately a long-term policy and plan.
I would only, I would only add the emphasis on the importance of just capturing information. I think that's, that's a big part of it. A lot of times, I'll read, I'll read something that's interesting, like compensated absences is a good one. You know, people, employees paid out at the end of their employment, that money is a liability. And I've come across that many times, but at one point, it just occurred to me, oh, let me capture that as information. And I think that's, that'll be a big help too, as people run into things. It's sort of like the, I've got contracts on my mind, but the past practices that are in contracts. You don't even know they're theirs.
Right.
But once you're aware that they exist, you start noticing them, and you can capture them. I think it's a similar principle for liabilities.
Okay. Well, I think, maybe we can wrap, wrap it up. I, just let me know if there's an objection, but if you're willing to talk to your team about, like, any of this, oh, I've done this, or that's crazy, I will be happy to raise my hand and take a stab at drafting the first, you know, some real actual content on some of these guiding concepts. And sort of think about that. And does anybody want to tackle vendor consultant support? I know, I know, well, Tricia's, it was one of her ideas, but maybe I could give that one, Nancy?
Yeah, vendor consultants?
Yeah, just, you know, just spend some time and maybe talk to Jan, and talk to others, and just say, hey, are there other people out there that are doing this? Love to do this for free for us, so.
Well, the first part of that I was going to suggest, you know, we're probably not the only ones thinking about this. So are there, you know, communities that have gone through this and actually managed to come up with something that seems to be working? And, you know, what's the best way to find out? If we were still a member of the League of Cities and Towns, it would be easy. But we're not. But it's that you might want to reach out to your counterparts in some of the other communities and say, hey, you know, who is doing this? And do you have any suggestions? And... And by the way, did you use a consultant? Are there really good consultants who, you know, are as good at listening as in, as at telling you what to do? Things like that. Because I was wondering too, you know, what is this vendor thing? And I can see how it might be helpful and worth your money perhaps, or, I don't know that you can get that for free, but...
Okay.
And we may have to decide, for example, that, say, investing in an actuarial model, a dynamic actuarial model, might be worth investing, whereas we may not need to invest in, say, getting a tighter confidence factor on a range of how much paving and drainage we need, because we know the number's so big, it's going to take so long to get to it anyway. So it may depend on, you know, that, that may help.
So was that, did you trick Nancy into agreeing to...
Yeah, well, I was, so, so maybe, and I recognize, the three of us aren't here, but what, I mean, again, the way these things go, we've all been through these, people will gravitate to their interest areas, and, but maybe what we could ask, if there's, if it's okay with Jan, is just talk to your team and make sure that they're, we capture whatever work may or may not have been done on this. And Nancy, if you could take a look at the vendors?
Yep.
I'll take the first stab at guiding concepts, and can we ask those with their liaison hats to at least think about, like, Joe, would you, could you think about like recreation, for example, you know, you know, obviously, you have your other areas of strength like firefighting and that, so maybe we just sort of loosely organize that way, as we think about the categories of, of, you know, liabilities and needs and revenues. And then I, I guess, Justin, I was going to maybe suggest, if you could perhaps be the sort of compiler of the liabilities and needs, I mean, since you've done so much of this work, and of course, you're on the Budget Committee as well, if there's an objection, I'll ask the solicitor to be thinking about the litigation portfolio. You're already in touch with the actuary. I think that's plenty of work for the next month.
And I think, I saw Jan had requested time on our next agenda for actuarial discussions.
Okay.
It'll make it doubly exciting.
Yeah, yeah, is that, is that okay? All right. And anybody that would like to help with this?
I'm sure you don't have any of these neglected kids.
All right, I feel like I talked a lot, hopefully, this is moving the thing forward a little bit, so.
Good.
All right, any last, any last anythings? I'll tell you what, I promised it'd be an hour, and look at that, 8:15. May I have a motion adjourned?
No moves.
All right?
Second.
Everybody have a great night, thank you so much.
Thank you.